One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I remembered my, my comments tonight, so I put them on my phone. Good evening and welcome to the Independence Township Planning Commission meeting. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Agendas and meetings, excuse me, agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the township website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the planning commission. State law establishes planning commissions. This planning commission is comprised of seven residents appointed to serve their community. Members are appointed by the supervisor and confirmed by the township board. Other individuals participating in the meeting this evening include representatives of the township, the township's planning consultants, Carlisle-Wortman Associates, and the township's engineering consultant, Noah K. Fraus. I've got an old one here that is different. If you wish to address the planning commission, please come forward to the podium when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the planning commission, not to anyone else in the room. If you have a cellphone or any other device that could possibly make sound and disrupt the meeting, please turn it off or put it on silent mode. And with all that said, could you please conduct a roll call?
Mr. Bushrell.
Here.
Mr. Galli.
Here.
Mr. Patel.
Here.
Mr. Ritchie. Absent. Mr. Savadat.
Here.
Ms. Tully, here. Oh, do you know what? I crashed you right off my list.
Well, that's not nice.
Because I thought you were the one that resigned. Mr. Lockren.
Here.
Sorry.
I was just trying to tell me something.
So we are, we are absent one member. We have a quorum and we, we can conduct business this evening, so. Next item is item D, review of the agenda. Does anyone want to support the agenda as presented, or does someone want to recommend any changes to the agenda?
A motion that we approve the agenda as posted.
Second.
With a motion and a second, we'll just do a verbal, a, a non-roll call vote. All in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing no one. The agenda is approved six to zero. Next item on the agenda is for public comment for items not on the agenda. Before we, before we, I invite anyone to go to the podium. I want to recognize that representatives of Troop 19, Boy Scout Troop 199 are here in attendance this evening. My understanding is they're trying to earn a merit badge. And this, this is a public meeting, so by, by the Open Meetings Act, you have to provide an opportunity for people to comment on, on anything that's on their mind or anything they want to talk about. So that's what, what this item is for. And let you in on a little secret. We have minutes prepared for the meeting that, that are eventually are going to come before this board and reviewed and approved and will go on the website. And anyone who speaks at the podium this evening and introduces themselves will get their name on the agenda for eternity. So that might go, that might go towards your merit badge. I don't know. I think maybe your troop leader would have some say in that, but I welcome anyone here who wishes to comment on items not on the agenda to come to the podium. Sign in and introduce yourself. And I particularly welcome the four members of Boy Scout Troop 199 to come in and if you just want to introduce yourself and tell us what, what merit badge you're seeking, you'd be, you'd be on the public record if you want to. So with that said, does anyone want to, want to make any comments for items that are not on tonight's agenda? Don't all rush the podium at once. No? Let the record show, we had four members of Troop 199 in attendance this evening. And with that, I'll close item E and move on to item F, the public hearings. Item F1 is PC file number 2022-011. The petitioner is Chris Brzezinski. How did I do? Brzezinski, yeah.
I'm actually your representative.
How did I do? Nailed it?
That's how I say his name.
Okay, perfect. Out of Grand Lake, Michigan, parcel 0822400019. Present zoning is C1, local commercial. And the applicant and their representative here this evening is requested, requesting amended special land use and amended final site plan approval for a drive-through modification for Culvers. Megan, do you have a report this evening?
Yes. Megan Massiminok with Carlisle-Wortman Associates. Dick, Carl apologizes he couldn't be here tonight, but he had other obligations. So in terms of this request, it's a dual drive-through. And as you're aware, that currently isn't allowed, but the zoning ordinance, there's zoning ordinance amendments that you recommended that are before the township board. They aren't, that should be approved next month. Even if that didn't happen, the applicant can go forward and get a variance and there's been other cases of that that have happened with these dual drive-through aisles. There were just a couple of things that we wanted to flag in terms of the dual ordering, ordering stations and how the site's proposed to be, proposed to be constructed. And one is that the access aisles to the ordering stations are to be rearranged for it to allow for dual stations and an aisle is going to be constructed for that second menu board and station. But we were asking for clarification of the location of the Westerly ordering, ordering station. It appears to be at the entry of the drive-through and that may cause traffic backups. And also want a clarification of what an ordering pod is and how it varies just from a speaker or those, the same things. Also, we wanted to note that the rear green belt will be eliminated and retaining wall be, will be constructed. And that screening is not required because the neighboring property is zone C1. Also, the pickup aisle is going to be enlarged to provide six additional waiting spaces on the north side of the aisle. And we asked for clarification on why some of those are behind the pickup window and a drive of 18 feet. So there seems to be some juggling on the site in terms of where people would pull in, order. And then especially on the top, there are waiting stations that are actually behind where someone would order. So we're confused as if somebody ordered, then they need to go to a waiting space for their food. Do they have to circulate all the way back around and wait in those six that are parallel to the waiting queue or not? So clarification on those items would be helpful. Also, we noted that the photometric plan doesn't, the lighting, the Kelvin, the K-value lighting hasn't been specified. And so we need that, that, to be clarification to make sure that that doesn't exceed 3,500 Kelvins, which is a requirement of your zoning ordinance. So we have a listing of four things in terms of clarifications or conditions of recommendations. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
I do, just so I'm, I'm just trying to see what's existing. I think she's C100 has the existing. So it looks like they're taking out quite a bit of landscaping on the east side. How many trees are they losing? How much open space are we losing? It seems like we're adding a lot of asphalt here, so what's going on with that?
You are adding some asphalt because you're adding another, another lane. If you're concerned about the amount of landscaping that is being removed, one of the things we noted is that additional landscaping should be provided in the site areas that are going to be impacted. So while, well, if you're going to have two drive-through lanes, it's likely unavoidable to have that much green space taken up. In terms of screening, there could be more proposed and that would get to the same level of opacity in terms of screening what's next door. But in terms of losing permeable area to non-permeable area, there wouldn't be a lot of design alternatives that could mitigate that permeable to non-permeable surface.
And we're losing on the north side too, right? Or is that already there?
A little bit.
And they need that, that drive-through lane to the right, that cut-through lane? It says loading zone, because that's what's taking out a lot of that landscaping.
Yeah, I think that would be an answer, a question for the applicant.
Fair enough. Thank you. Has the stormwater calculations been updated for the additional pavement?
I, I'll touch on that as part of our report, but yeah, that was one of the items we had brought up.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm getting used to this again. Right person to add.
He was going to be our next guest at the podium.
Yes, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Any other questions? And we, we may invite you up later, so thanks. Mr. Lungers, do you have any, anything to add? It sounds like you do.
Yeah, it's about stormwater, right?
Yeah, amazing.
But no, that was really the major item that we had noted in our report is that there does appear to be an increase in hard surface being proposed as part of these improvements. So we wanted to see calculations on the final construction drawings indicating what that was and then if it fell within the parameters that they were allocated for use of the regional shared detention basin on the site or if they need to make modifications to accommodate for that. So that was really the, the main item here. The rest of them are kind of just some cleanup items. There's going to be no impact to water sewers part of this proposed improvement. We did question the three stalls behind the drive-through window as well. And, and if they were needed or should be labeled differently. Maybe that's an area where we could get some green space back if they don't need them. Otherwise, the, the rest of it was all things that we'd be looking for on the final construction drawings.
Any questions? Thank you. Do you have anything to add to the presentations this evening?
I do not. Do you want me to? I've never done this before.
Well, before you do, I've got, maybe I've got some questions and concerns maybe that you could, that you could address. So I, I agree, so I, I supported the amendment because, so I've been to this Culvers many times. It's, it's, they run a really good business, good service, it's clean. They do a really nice job. And I support the concept of the, of the dual, dual drive-throughs. But I agree with Mr. Lockren. The, the, the amount of imperviousness is concerning to me because with the, with the additional asphalt, we lose open space. And I'm looking at six parking spaces to the north. And I'll address the, the imperviousness first. It seems like a loss of a lot of open space that provides value for a lot of different reasons. But I'm looking at six parking spaces, parallel parking spaces, when there are six parking spaces on the south side of the building that could be utilized. They're, they're existing there today. And they're, they could be accessed by the probably teenagers that are delivering the food that aren't, that don't have to go across a bypass lane where they're screened by cars that are ordering and paying and with the other cars that are kind of racing around the corner to get out of there. I think it's, I don't think it's very safe. And I think it's, especially given the fact that parking three spaces behind the ordering window, you're forcing people to, to race around to, to, to get their spot so they don't lose it. We're creating a dangerous situation that I think is unnecessary. So I, I would like to see all of them go and park at those existing six spaces that are right here. I think that's a simple solution. So with that said, I'm wondering, I'm guessing the need for the, for the dual stations is the drive, the drive-through is just doing great business, which is good. But I, I'm wondering, did you, did you do, did you do the numbers on, are you getting more people driving through because they're not sitting inside? If that's the case, then that, I think that bolsters my argument for using those existing parking spaces. If there's not as many people sitting inside, can you eliminate some of the parking spaces and pick up more open space to compensate for the additional imperviousness? The heat island effect is real. This is a lot of imperviousness on this site. And there's some questions in there somewhere, I think. So with that, I invite you to the podium and at least introduce yourself, sign in and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Katie Schmidt and I'm the owner of the restaurant. And those are all very good questions. With COVID, it definitely shift to more of a drive-through situation. So we're at currently 60% drive. And we thought the numbers would shift back a little bit, but really that, that location is staying steady at the 60%. We do have another location that we built it with a double drive and it is completely so much more efficient, so. And it's working very well. It's our highest grossing store. There was a couple of concerns, the, the menu board. I don't know why they're calling it an order pod because it is just a menu board. It's the same thing that's there right now. That is staggered. And what I'm envisioning, what I know what's going on right now, is that's not going to cause a backup. What we're having right now is not only a backup all the way towards the entrance where Art and Jake's is on that, that community drive coming in. We're noticing the backup is coming. People are driving into here and it's causing, so we had to put cones out so people couldn't drive. And it's causing a, they're, they're coming in here as a T right here. And customers are getting angry at each other. So that is what we'll eliminate with this double drive. It will just basically funnel both of them through and it will stop the whole congestion part on that. The staggering is not going to make a big difference. So that's what I'd have to say to that. I don't see that being an issue. The, the, the six cars on the north side, that, I understand what you're saying. So what we have noticed with the, one of our locations is it's taking cash becomes the problem. So you can have the two ordering points, but you're still going to have the, the bottleneck of getting the money. So what we have done is there is like Chick-fil-A. Chick-fil-A is the ultimate goal of all the drive-throughs. They all want to be doing their drive-through the same way. And they have, we have iPads now that just take credit cards. So that right lane is all credit payment. So that's what that is. So you do not have people doing circles. It is just purely, they take an order and they're directed to the right lane because they don't need to pay. So they're not even going to go to the order, order, they're not even going to go to the window at all. So eventually that window will be completely gone. That's going to be the future. You're just going to have people walking food out. So you're just not, you'll take payment at the local stations is what it will be. But for now, it's working fine for us to take the cash at the order station. The credit card goes to the right side. The whole key is for this double drive is the park spaces for Culvers because it's all made to order food, so it does take longer. So if we do not have the park spaces, then you're definitely going to have the backup. So this is definitely enough park spaces for us here, especially with that credit card payment on the right side. Let's see, the third issue. The loading zone over here, that is purely for the truck and that is out of our control. So we, we would, we would love for the, to say that the truck is going to show up for the deliveries before we open, but GFS, Gordon Food Service, will not guarantee that for us. So if that is a huge problem, we'll have to just go back to Gordon Food Service. When we're designing these concepts now, the site plan, we have to get approval from them just so they can get in and out. I guess they're having a shortage of drivers too and they're not trained as well. And so there's been all kinds of issues, even delivering food. So they have to approve our site plan. That's why we have that loading zone, so they can show up at any time of the day and deliver food. The only other option I can see with that is that we shut down one of the lanes when they deliver. But I just, I don't know if they're going to be able to get through that lane because we have the canopy on these stations. So that's why they have that loading zone out there.
Can I ask about, how often is Gordon Food Services there? What type of, like what?
They do twice a week and they take about an hour to deliver.
Okay, so it's a significant.
Yeah, it takes a while. Yeah, they're big orders. So, and yeah, this drive-through is way overdue at this particular location with the sales volume now. Basically, the, it's just taken forever to get through with that single lane. So the loading zone, I don't know. That's a tricky one there. So I don't, I, I can take this back to Chris and have him figure out this impervious surface to figure out where we can add the, the, put some more grass in. Right now, we don't have a problem. I think what I was told is they had to add that so you could make this turn right at the outside here with the two lanes now. Right now, we have an escape lane regardless and we have cars parking on both sides. So we already have that escape lane and it works fine. And I don't, Culvers will not, they will not want us pulling people over on, into parked spots. They will want us to keep them. People get angry when you park them.
My commute home tonight was terrible. I was gonna, I was gonna stop by and just look at the parking because it's a concert night.
Yeah.
It's dinner time. And I just was going to take like a mental snapshot of what, what spaces are available. But if you could, if you could look gazing at your crystal ball and, and, you know, tell me what parking would be like right now. Are these spaces filled?
Yes.
Is the parking lot filled? Is it crazy? What's going on?
Well, what's going on with that now is we typically would use these spaces back here for employees. But now Art and Jake's customers take these spots and employees start parking here. So our parking lot now at night at dinner is completely full. I mean, it's pretty limited because our, our dining is staying steady now too. So, but yeah, this used to be employees. Art and Jake's people didn't want to park way back here. It's a lot quicker for them to park here and just cross over. And honestly, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, as long as we have enough for our own customers.
And also the safety, are you, are you, what precautions do you take to ensure that, that the people who are, the cars aren't getting hit?
No, that's a great question. So if the, the iPads come into use, which we have at a couple other locations right now and we never have any issues with those, they are wearing the vest. I don't know if you've been to Chick-fil-A. They all have the vest on, the reflective vest. And we have cones out there. It's, we've never had an issue. I know it kind of, with the younger kids going across, the 14-year-olds sprinting like that, it probably is perception from the guests that there's going to be an issue. But we haven't had that issue. We train them, basically. And the other, they, they are going to have this pathway, this walkway here that's going to be all the way. They'll be able to deliver to the foods that way, the customers that way too. But we've never had an issue with anybody. Everybody seems to kind of pull out pretty slowly too, so.
Okay.
That's just from my experience.
I've been monopolizing your, monopolizing your time here. Any other questions?
Oh, no, that's okay.
I do, but Brian.
Well, I, I guess I was going to say, when the initial thing of why is the west drive-through ordering Well, I, I guess I was going to say, when the initial thing of why is the West's drive-through ordering station so far back? Isn't that pushing them into the parking lot? I, I, I agreed with that comment. I mean, fortunately, we seem we have a, you know, extremely well-versed owner here who knows how our business runs. And I mean, if you feel that's the best location for that, you know, I guess I'd have to, to go with your logic on it because you know how it runs. To move it farther north to get another car into stacking, you know, I, I don't know if that's an issue or not. But I, you know, I kind of agreed with you when that first came up. On the impervious surface, I mean, there's a letter in there from the fire department too saying they can get all the way around and they've tested the turn-in radiuses. If both drive-throughs are stacked, that escape lane is still there for fire access. So I mean, it's kind of a good and bad thing. Yes, you're losing some vegetation, you know, but perhaps, you know, the, our staff can find a creative way to add some more vertical vegetation somewhere or, you know, maybe come up with a little hybrid that works for everybody. But I mean, it sounds like you know how that is going to run and that's the future of
Yeah.
making your business more efficient and successful. Those are my comments for now.
Isn't this landscaping that you show between Culvers and the restaurant next door, isn't that all new? There's no landscaping there now, is there?
Um, I was, as, as somebody brought that up, it's Taco Bell and there's not much. I'm trying to envision what's there right now. There's some trees, yes, there's some, and it's grass.
They'll remove and put in some spruces, Colorado.
Well, and there's parking lot. Landscaping added too evidently.
Can you, can you clarify, are you adding parking lot island trees or are they existing?
We have existing island trees and shrubbery right now. And then we have the trees out along Sashaba. There's some trees back on the golf course side in between Art and Jake's and us. We could definitely add more landscaping. I just, I don't know what the requirements are, like where you exactly would like that. Technically, our patio is way too big if that is, adds any help. I mean, we could shrink that. I just don't know if that's even going to make that big of a difference.
So I appreciate you being here. I have a, and, and first of all, I don't know if any of us, at least I'm speaking for myself. I don't think any of us have an issue with the, the dual menu board. So it's just a matter of making it work, you know, functionally and, and not losing too much of the impervious surface. So I guess I, I'm, I want to make sure I understand all of this. So I have a couple of clarifying questions if you can help me. That parking on the north side, those six spaces, those would only be for the cars that are in the right side?
That's the best way to do it so the customer doesn't get confused and it keeps it efficient.
Okay, so nobody in the left lane would ever have to jump over to that because they're paying cash?
No.
So it's only the credit card line on the right?
Yeah.
I think that helps a little bit from what I'm thinking. As far as losing that landscaping, Brad, I agree. But I think they have a decent buffer there or a decent landscape area there. It's not really landscaped that well and they're, they're improving it. So they still have nine, it looks like they still have nine feet by doing that. So I'm, I'm a little less concerned now that you've explained that and that they will be adding landscape. I think it actually looks pretty attractive, so.
I might want to clarify one.
Yeah.
During the times when it's not busy, we will not be having somebody out there with a credit card iPad. And so the way it works at the other locations is they funnel in just fine, like you don't even need this. They're not parking on the right side at all. We'll have plenty of park spots. When you'd be utilizing this is during peak hours when you'd have somebody out there moving them through. So on the, you said nobody would come, they would, this right lane would funnel to the window during times when it's not busy.
But the left would never go to the?
No, that would not. No, they don't need to do that. No.
So I guess from my standpoint, I'm, I'm not, now that you've explained that, as long as I'm understanding it right, I'm not, I don't have as much of an issue, especially I think that landscape is pretty attractive. So I'm actually okay with that. I guess I'm, the, the area that I'm concerned most with, I guess, is the east side. And I know that it doesn't, I know you've got, there's nothing, it's vacant to the east of it. But you know, someday, I think on tonight, the agenda, there's, there's something for that area. Someday that's going to develop. So I struggle with losing the, the landscape area there. Although I look at Taco Bell in the north, it looks like they grow it up to the property line. So I'm just, it'd be nice if we didn't lose so much from what we have because it is pretty sparse. So if there's a way to, to figure out the loading zone without having that bypass, I am all for that. Maybe it can be a little bit closer to the, to the entrance, the drive aisle that's at the south, what, the southeast corner of the site. So you can keep that landscaping there and not have a bypass. I think I'd be more comfortable with that. I don't know if you can fit that truck there. I, I'm assuming you don't have any room for that truck now. So does it just go wherever?
Yeah, he, yeah, he comes right through, so he parks on the right side of the menu board. Yeah.
Okay, so he's losing that. Okay, I get it now. So that would be my, that would be what I'd want to see. And then the last question I have to clarifying is, and I know you probably mentioned this, but that menu board, why is it so far up on the left side?
So I think you just mentioned, oh, no, Brian did, that it, it really does help with the park concept of the ordering at Culvers. So you can put it further back. We'll just lose one park spot.
But my, my only thought on that is, I understand what you're doing, but it seems like the cars will then be parked here on the left side and they're going to get bypassed by the ones on the right. And to your point, they're going to be going to the, all the way to the right on the north side anyway when they're paying by credit card. But if they're not, I can just see people getting upset because they're ordering at the end here on the right and all these people are waiting on the left side, so.
It's really not that big of a difference. We could take one car out there and move it back if that's, you know what I mean? Like if you want, you could move it further north by one car and they pretty much would just be in line with each other if you want us to switch that.
It was more of a question and I think it's your business.
Yeah, I was just trying to add one more because that's really what it comes down to. The whole, with the drive-through, the customer's perception, if they're continuously moving and then they get to that park spot, they're not upset. Like that's the whole key is just to get them parked so they can just play with their phone or do whatever and then they're fine with the wait time because our wait times can be extremely long. But it's not, it's not going to kill it if we have to move it back.
Maybe one space.
Yeah, that's fine.
Maybe that's not enough anyway, but anyway, I guess my, my only point is.
It's not a bad thought with the customers kind of wondering, you know, who's first, who's second.
Right.
That does make sense.
So I guess my only, my only thought, and, and I don't know if there's a way around it or not, is just that loading space that,
Okay.
that bothers me that there's taking so much.
I have a follow-up on that with, with the loading space thing. Weren't you saying your menu boards have a canopy on them so the big truck can't pass in the ordering lane?
He can't get through that.
So then that would be the same for a fire emergency vehicle as well. So you kind of need the full bypass for the fire letter to apply.
We don't have to have that canopy, but it's nice to.
If you do, you do.
Yeah. That's a good point.
Before I open up the public hearing, just a couple of things. It's a little frustrating that a food delivery service is driving design on a site.
Yeah.
Given, I mean, like I said, I've been to your business numerous times. You're killing it over there. You do a nice job. You've got all the leverage in the world, but I'm not a business person like you. Question for maybe, maybe the applicant, maybe Megan or Brian. The parking data on the site plan shows forty-eight spaces provided, sixty-seven required, variance required. Do they need a variance or is this all, is this from the first site plan that we saw? Is this a holdover?
Yeah, this was approved originally by the planning commission and you guys are allowed to deviate from parking.
So this does temper my comments a little bit because had they, had they met parking, there'd be nineteen more parking spaces on the site.
Fit there, yeah.
So, you know, I, this is a little bit different because it's, it's challenging because you're, you're an existing site and you're trying to fix a situation that's challenging. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm okay, I'm, I'm willing to provide a little bit more lenience on the, on the imperviousness provided you bump up the landscaping.
Okay.
Just because of the fact that I was just reminded that we, we granted them a nineteen space parking, nineteen parking space variance, which reduces imperviousness, which is a good thing. So, any other questions before I open the public hearing? And, and I just to reiterate what Mr. Lockren said. I'm not, I'm not trying to throw roadblocks in front of you. I think you, I, I support this concept. I just want to make sure it's right.
It's fine. I understand.
And if you could have a seat, I'll open up the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll put the public hearing for anyone who wishes to comment on this item. Remind you to stay on the subject of this application and, and at this time, please come to the podium and share your ideas with us. Anyone online? Hearing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. At six thirty-six PM. Bring it back to the board for discussion and deliberation. So I talked myself off the ledge with imperviousness. Thanks for humorin' me. And I, you've addressed my concerns about safety. I think just continue to focus on it. I, I know, you know, training and awareness and the vests. The margin of error is zero. Anyone want to forward a motion? Mr. Lockren, you had some ideas?
Well, my thought was that perhaps they, they go back and take a look at it before they come back to us. I'm open to making recommendations for them to work through staff, but I want at least us to be all on the same page.
If we do, if we do postpone, I think it's appropriate to postpone with clear direction so that they can be successful.
I mean, my only concern is I don't, I don't know what they can do with that loading zone. And that's going to, to your point, that's going to drive everything.
Question for Mr. Outman. The rewriting of this ordinance is with the township board next meeting, you said, or next month?
It'll be in August.
So that's, that's approved, if it is approved.
Well, it'll be August and then September for final.
Final reading. So if this pushes another month, then they have to go to ZBA. That ordinance passes, it kind of makes it moot in their, through the construction season, correct?
Yeah, I mean, they can, they can wait till the ordinance is approved by the time they go to ZBA. You're looking at, I mean, September meeting, we lock that up next week. So I mean, it's, it seems a moot point to even do that. Just wait for the ordinance to be adopted.
I mean, I guess with our comments and everything that's been said, I, I mean, I, I think I can trust the staff to find the best solution myself. But that's, I'm just one person. Especially considering that we've gone through the time to rewrite this ordinance and it's going to change.
I mean, it's the site plan though, that's the, the, the discussion more than obviously the, the menu board. Sounds like everybody else is okay with moving, moving with, them working with staff?
Yes, I don't think the changes are, you know, big enough to warrant a postponement myself.
I'd agree with Judy.
Do we have specific direction for staff? If, if this is administratively, or excuse me, if this is approved, is there some direction we are providing staff regarding the loading on loading zone?
Yeah, I mean, from my standpoint, it would be, you know, work with staff to find alternative areas for the loading zone and/or find opportunities to, to add additional landscaping in lieu of, of losing the impervious surface. And I know that's general. That's sort of why I wanted it to come back. But I'm fine with them working with staff on that if the rest of the commission is.
If that was in a motion, I'd probably support it.
You're going to force me to do a motion. I get it.
Pressure's on.
I need a motion. To approve PC file twenty-two zero eleven. Parcel zero eight two two four hundred zero one nine, C one local commercial. Request amended special land use and amended final site plan approval for a drive-through modification for Culvers. With the condition that the applicant should work with staff to look at alternatives for the loading zone location and look for opportunities to reduce, reduce the impervious surface through additional landscaping.
Or alternative means.
Or alternative means.
What I mean by that is perhaps there's the opportunity for those six spaces to be impervious pavement as an example.
I'll agree to that.
I'll second it then. Question?
Mr. Chair, per our letter could also, it be added that the clarification of the K-value of lighting is submitted and that it's, it's, does not exceed thirty-five hundred Kelvins?
How about if I just add stipulation that they meet all additional requirements of, of staff and, and planning and engineering staff?
Thank you.
I support that. As the maker of the, of the seconder of the motion, I support it. So I think we're ready for a roll call, Luke.
Mr. Bushrow?
Aye.
Mr. Galley?
Yes.
Mr. Lockren?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie absent, Chairman Savadon?
Yes.
Ms. Tully, yes.
So we got, we got to a good spot for you. Just continue to work with staff just to fine tune this, this application.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is another public hearing. Item F two, PC file, PC file number two thousand twenty-three dash zero zero three. Township Leo Capital Investments LLC out of Bavonia, Michigan. Property is located on the east side of Sashaba, north of I seventy-five. Address is seven zero zero six Sashaba Road. Parcel number zero eight two two four zero two zero zero four. Present zoning is C one local commercial and the applicant is requesting planned rezoning overlay from C one local commercial to OS two office service two. Do you have a presentation?
Yes.
Awesome.
So as stated, this application has been revised to PRO OS two. While the OS two is a more appropriate zoning category, which we're willing to recommend, the application of the PRO is based on, based on the specific plan that's presented is problematic. I'll get into that a little bit, in a little bit. But first of all, the application doesn't meet a key provision of the ordinance, which is in order to be eligible for proposal and review of rezoning with planned rezoning overlay, a property owner must propose a rezoning of property to a new zoning district classification and must, as part of that proposal, voluntary offer, voluntarily offer certain site-specific regulations, which are in the material restricts. And here's the important part, more strict or limiting than the regulations that would apply to the land under the proposed new zoning district, including regulations set forth in the definition of planned rezoning overlay. And while that is problematic, they are proposing conditions which are in the site plan that's associated with this that are less strict than the underlying, specifically the height. And so the applicant's proposing a three-story building in a district where height limit is to two stories. Also, we have concerns regarding what we consider to be regulated wetland. There was a report from our staff on that in your packet. I can have, I'm happy to answer any questions about it, but I can, I don't want to go into further detail here. Suffice it to say, Eagles would be the ultimate decider as to whether this is a regulated wetland or not. And it, we feel it would be inappropriate at this time to look that, with the not being clear whether this is a regulated wetland and we, and based on information from previous site plans that this likely is, that's a material thing for you to consider as part of this PRO application. Also, we've noted in a previous review, there's an existing pond on the site that proposes detention and sedimentation for the off-site properties. The applicant's aware that they need to address, address these. And I'm sure the, the township. The applicant's aware that they need to address, address these, and I'm sure the, the township engineer will say more. But there needs to be either easements in order to get to that, those stormwater facilities, and those haven't been shown, and those are part of. Those would be things that this particular site plan would need to design around. And we weren't seeing that in the site plan that was attached, and again, since that's the offered condition. And only the applicant can offer the conditions, this is not an instance where you, as the planning commission or the township board, can place conditions on it. Because it is a PRO, we felt that that needs to be taken into, that needs to be taken into account. We wanted to say that the absence of, we previously noticed that the absence of floor, floor plans would be helpful in determining the adequate parking. We got some information back on that. However, disagree with the assumption that the conference room safe, space will be solely for guests. There's two conference rooms and one boardroom, and it seems unrealistic to us that they're intended to host meetings in which guests only would attend. As mentioned before, the building exceeds the height requirements of the O2 District. While the applicant's response is that they intend to get a variance. I think we've stated how we feel that that is not appropriate within the PRO and conflicts with the requirements. Also, we've previously commented on the siting of the building, the inefficiency of the parking lot layout, and the location of the entrance facing the rear of the commercial buildings. The applicant wishes to keep the site layout, it is, no changes have been made in response to our comments. But again, this is attached to the rezoning, and so if they would come back and have to change the site plan later, or were asked to change the site plan later, they would actually have to change the rezoning. And finally, we had some comments about potential deficiencies in parking, and they responded that they would provide parking based on occupancy. While the deviation from parking may be requested from the planning commission, those calculations on the site plan are incorrect. The conference in the boardroom space is not included. Therefore, any request of deviation from parking must be based on what normally would be required by this ordinance. So in short, it's clear to us that there are complex issues associated with the site that may only be resolved through a normal site plan wetland permit review, separate from rezoning of the property. And we do not recommend approval of the current application.
Any questions?
Yeah, I just, I just think there are too many issues with the plan to allow any zoning change to go through separately. I mean, there are major issues.
Any other, any other comments, questions? Anything to add from an engineering standpoint?
We touched on many of the same items that have already been addressed in our, our report here. The utilities are available to service the site, there's points of access for vehicles and pedestrian, which they've accommodated. But the, the issues surrounding existing and proposed easements, the wetlands and the detention basin are all highlighted in our report, which have already been touched on. So I won't go into those further unless there's questions here, but very, very similar report to a planning consultant.
I have a question for him.
Yep.
So on the, the way the property's laid out now, there's a couple storm sewers that cross the property. Has the applicant provided?
Correct.
How those are going to be rerouted yet, or that gets farther on in the process?
Uh, the utility plans are very preliminary, but they do show rerouting, you know.
I mean, I thought I saw it, but I didn't know if that was just their parking lot drains or the physical mains being rerouted.
They will be kind of co-mingled and around the building to, to get there, but again, there were some existing easements that bisect the property that we want to see how those are being relocated. We have neighboring properties that will need to be, you know, part of those agreements, along with some revisions to the, the detention pond easement, things like that.
And what's the ultimate discharge of that whole sector up there? That's not the pipe that comes under I-75 into the back?
No, this all goes, this all goes north into the lake, it does not get into the 75 pipe.
Okay.
On the west side of Sashabod.
Okay. All right, that's, that's all I have.
In, in tailgating on that, when I was reading all this and looking at the, the outlays, the thing that came across to me, it says pond is part of the stormwater management, like the whole area, the wetlands. And there was the King and McGregor survey, and then the, the other survey as far as the wetlands. How, how do we proceed as part of the stormwater management? Like if this, the, the pipes coming across Sashabod and the flow from Taco Bell and the flow from this, how do?
So there's a, there's a historical design for that basin, and what they'll have to do is, if they move forward into construction drawings, they'll have to go back, look at that design, find out what it was sized for, what was allocated to this property. And find out if they're designing within those parameters, and if they're not, they may have to enlarge that basin or provide other means for pretreatment and detention. You know, that would be required in excess if they're exceeding what they were allocated originally.
Cause, cause some of those drawings go right up to that basin, but that was my question, the whole stormwater management approach and how all this.
Yep, so they would, they would have to make sure that they're maintaining what was historically designed and then mitigate anything that they're doing above and beyond those requirements. And again, the, the current plan set doesn't get into that, that's usually a final site plan construction drawing issue.
Go for it. I guess, you know, I don't know if you're the, the right guy to ask this or not, but um, so obviously the pond, we, we protect the pond. It's a big open waterway, it's obviously the water's edge and close to it, you know, it, if this went forward, that could be cleaned up, but the, the pond has to remain protected. Cause it's, it's obviously a waterway, it's obvious. The ditch to the north that comes out of the back of the other parcels, you know, from the pictures and what I can tell, I mean, I mean, I'm not an expert, does look more like a drainage ditch. That would probably just be connected to the pond. The wetland in the middle of the property, I guess, is what we're looking for the Eagle direction on, and if that is actually one or not. If it is, in other meetings, people have talked about land bank, transferring it, mitigating it, so I, I guess, just ask the question now. We don't know what that course would be until we know exactly what we're looking at, correct? And that's the issue.
Yeah, the, the course of action is going to be dependent on who has jurisdiction over the wetland. I think we have historical data, I believe it was the Arby's, right, that indicated that that was an Eagle regulated wetland. The reports they have supplied kind of conflict with that, so that's where we need to get a final determination so that we can recommend a course of action. That if those are proposed to be filled, then Eagle would have to be involved and mitigation may be required depending on size and the quality of that wetland area.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Other questions? Thank you.
I just want to provide a little bit more historical stuff on the, on the Arby's. That was an Eagle regulated wetland, the EQ at the time, but it was also a township regulated wetland. And they contributed to the wetlands bank as a result of that filling that they did. It's right where the drive is, right in front of the Arby's. So, I mean, that, that was a developed wetland that just happened over time from 2006 when this was all planned. But Eagle's got to make the ultimate determination, obviously.
Okay, is the applicant available? Please introduce yourself and sign in.
Hi, my name is Veronica Clark with Way Trim. I live on 495 Graffs Cap Road. I would like to add about the wetland, that Way Trim did go on site with Eagle. And it sounded very hopeful that Eagle was okay with any development on the property. Didn't have any concern about developing on that property with the wetland there. There potentially be some permitting, but nothing that would stop the, the project.
Do you have anything to add to the presentations this evening, the reports that were presented?
No, not at this time, I guess. Did you guys have questions for us?
Any questions?
I guess I'll start. What has changed since the last time we saw this? It looks pretty much the same.
Yeah, I believe we added some more green space and revised the parking calculations. I think we're also on board with rerouting the stormwater that's existing on site. And I, I'm not sure since you were here, but I believe at one point, the material of the building, we had changed that. But the, the main layout of the building, I think, was the same.
Other question?
Um, excuse, this is Kevin Royson, too, online, I, I'm not sure if you can hear me or not, but I guess to follow up on Veronica. One of the issues that was discussed here was a height, height requirement or a height of a more stringent hotel slash zoning ordinance. And, you know, I just wanted to bring up that the, the, the neighboring Comfort Inn is a three-story hotel within the same zoning. It's a three-story hotel, we revised that, eh, from a, you know. Yes, we exceed the stories, we're a three-story hotel, but, but the, the plans have been revised so that the parapet, the top of the building were less than 35 feet, which was the height requirement. So that was, that was the one item that we revised. We revised the building facade to, to meet the, the height requirement of the zoning. Granted, it is a lar, it's a taller story, but it needs the height requirement in a footage. Secondly, Veronica touched on it, we've had a, we've had some ongoing meetings with, and discussions with Eagle. And the fact that, that existing wet, or that existing detention basin is a designed detention basin, based on our, our survey and the site walk is, is that existing top of bank has been inundated with some additional runoff, which is accommodated for some of the additional flows and flat areas that are within our site. Which have promoted the growth of wetland plantings. The original plans from the whole development had a temporary drainage ditch that ran across this, this site from the Arby's location, so, from the Taco Bell location to, to accommodate that site drainage and, and discharge it into that, that detention basin. You know, our, our intent with the design is, you know, they left it to as open drainage ditch as they didn't know how this site was going to be developed. With this revised building concept and parking layout and everything as it lays right now, we've, we've picked up the additional drainage from those, those adjacent sites. We've rerouted in a manner that makes this site developable for this particular hotel site. And rerouted it into a storm sewer and, and discharged it into the existing basin. In addition to that, we're going to, you know, through the process here, we're going to go through and update the, the easements that go along with the storm drainage. So that, you know, it's in a drainage district, it's going to be maintained, it's going to get cleaned. The ultimate discharge from those adjacent property sites are going to get discharged into the pond as originally intended. You know, I, I guess the biggest, the biggest discrepancy that we have would be on the parking calculations. You know, and based on, on the operations that have been told to us and relayed by the owner is, is in fact that those conference rooms are going to be utilized for guests only. Now, if they're the ones managing the rooms, I can't go on a limb and say, hey, this is what we're going to be used for guests. But if you go through the parking calculations based on the number of employees, the number of rooms, we meet the requirements. It's going to come down to whether the determination is based on this, this rezoning request, whether those, those rooms remained open to the public, which is the intention of, you know, which is against the intention of the management to use those for hotel guests. You know, that would be the, the biggest factor in, in the adequate spaces provided. You know, working through the site plan approval and the engineering approval, we've got a pretty good handle on utilities, parking. allowable access to Sashabod, I think there's a, there's a viable path forward. And at this point, we're just trying to get this property rezoned correctly to build the intended structure. And work through the process of a site plan approval and then an engineering approval to meet the, the, the requirements of the township. And that's, that's what we're asking for here.
Well, you may know all of those things, but none of it's in our packet, so none of us have that understanding.
Question for Megan, I think? Looking at the report, number five, the proposed building exceeds height requirements in the OS2 District. The applicant's response is that they intend to request a variance. The applicant's response is that the building height has been revised to 35 feet, although it remains three stories. The height of three stories will still require a variance which conflicts with the requirements for a PRO. Is that factual?
That is factual.
But he just said they didn't need a variance.
No, they do need a variance for stories.
Okay.
So that would be a dimensional variance still.
Okay.
Because it's the number of stories and the, the zoning ordinance says a height and number of stories.
Okay, thank you, and for a follow-up to that. In order to be eligible for the proposal and review of rezoning with planned rezoning overlay PRO. A property owner must propose a rezoning of property to a new zoning district classification. And must, as part of such proposal, voluntarily offer certain site-specific regulations. Which are more strict or limiting than the regulations that would apply to the land under the proposed zoning district. But they want a variance, it seems.
They, they want a variance for height in terms of stories and a waiver in terms of parking.
So it's not more strict, it's less strict?
Yes.
So it's counter to the standards of approval?
Yes.
Just wanted to be clear on that.
And I guess, I, I would like to interject, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong. The, the planning consultant directed us into going for a proposed, proposed rezoning overlay as the intended use with an OS2. Specifically calling out the story requirement, which was included in there, a three-story plus a height requirement, which is in the application as well, of 35 feet. And if, and if that's against the ordinance, we're getting what misled, misled on, on that information. And my, my question to the board would be, how, how was the neighboring parcel allowed to build a three-story hotel within the same, the same zoning ordinance?
Well, I guess.
The same zoning, I, I mean, that's what, that's what we're trying to figure out here.
Okay, well, so we're, the item on the agenda this evening is PC file number 2023-003. And the, the packet that's before us this evening, we're not here to adjudicate what was said or wasn't said outside of this room. And we're not here to talk about a site plan that was granted years ago, we're here to talk about this application. So Brian, you had your hand up.
Well, I was going to provide factual information on this, the hotel that's a few doors down for the proposed. That was a strict OS2 zone parcel. They came in, they got site plan approval, they went to the ZBA for a story variance, and they got approved. So they, they didn't do any rezoning, nothing was done there. It was just a, a simple site plan that was handled by the planning commission.
Right.
Many, many times, actually, after it expired.
Right.
I guess speaking globally on this, I mean, it, from the sounds of this, we're, you know, there's, it's perceived to be a lot of loose ends before we can proceed. I guess. Specific to the proposed use, the look of the building. I guess I'm curious if, if, if people have an objection to that. I mean, as, as far as the use goes, in my mind, there's one next door, just down the way and across the street, there's another multi-level building. The renditions of the building, to me. Look good, the materials and the façades. But with that being said, I mean, obviously, there's still a wetland issue. There's, you know, a, a use and a parking thing with the banquet rooms and, and meeting rooms and whatnot. So I guess, you know, what's, what's an appropriate course? So I guess, uh, you know, what's, what's an appropriate course of action forward? With good direction to clarify it all. But I mean, I, I, unless the rest of the commission has, you know, a, a different view of, than me of the use of the building, that, you know, I'm just one person.
This seems to be a moving target. Like, there's no, I don't see the committal here on, like, the, there's some... First of all, the standard, the standards of the, I'll let you speak in a second, sir. The standards of the, of the rezoning haven't been met. There's some, there's some unanswered questions about parking. Before I forget. There's a note on here that says the parking require, the landscaping requirements are twelve to fifteen percent?
Site landscaping.
Site landscaping requirements, open space requirements, twelve to fifteen percent? We offer a range of twelve to fif, not a, not a minimum?
So the minimum's twelve?
So the minimum's twelve?
Yep.
Because that's low. That should be higher. We should look at that. I don't like that at all.
Doesn't count green belt, doesn't count anything else, or parking lot trees. It's other landscaping calculation.
Okay.
I would support your comment on that. Something we need to look at.
We need to look at that. But that's not for this meeting. Sir, you had a comment?
No.
Please, please sign in and introduce yourself for the record.
Uh, for the record, um, my name is Neeresh Patel. And Leo Capital is our company, and I live in two zero four eight three Lebonia, Michigan. Doing hospitality for thirty-five years. All technical question answers submitted will be done by our professional team. But speaking on the couple issue, the height requirement, I, I used to be Asian-American hotel owner, associate and board of director. Um, if you ever heard, Ahoa, it's one of the largest industries, associate and in the United States. We own sixty-eight percent hotel industries in America. And I was the BOD. So I had the pleasure to meet all the CEO, Hilton, Marriott, Thai, and all of them. So conference room and the meeting room, it's not that we have big one that allowed five hundred peoples or so. It is a part of the prototype design by each brand. If you go to any Holiday Inn, any Marriott, any Hyatt place, you will see it's for the guest to have business meeting, guest to have a party with their, their annual, whatever the corporate. So it's not we advertising for convention to bring for the conference room. So that will be my only explanation on the convention room. That's not additional parking. They're gonna bring five hundred people or thousand people there. That's all. And height, always I talk to the Hyatt CEO and all of that. They, they, whatever township high requirements are, they're willing to modify their prototype building, period. Thank you.
So, so just to piggyback on that, so moving forward. There, there'd be a, a willingness to condition approval of, of an application on conference room area being available only to guests?
Yes.
How would you enforce that?
Yeah, only to guests attending?
And, and just, this is anecdotal, and I understand that, but I've attended many as a resident where I have a, a business leader that's out of state, comes in, books a single room in a hotel, and then gathers his entire sales force for a sales meeting, which is four, five, six, seven people, if not more. Um, it happens frequently. Um, I have attended many of those. I know of other people attend those. It would be very difficult to enforce.
It's, even in the Comfort Inn and Suites, I have Comfort Inn and Suites. We have up to thousand, fifteen hundred, two thousand square feet banquet hall. That's a prototype recording.
I agree that it would be difficult to enforce. Um, I just wanted to note that in this instance, it's the applicant who has to bring that condition forward.
Thank you for the reminder. Any other questions?
I don't really have any questions. I just have comments, so I can wait.
Okay. I've got a question for Brian. The, the outdoor patios and such on the south end of the building is, is that, would qualify it for the Sashaba overlay conditions and so?
That was, yeah, that was the...
Outside feature places?
That would be their attempt to meet those standards. They have that too.
Okay.
So there was a slide in the package that showed the building being built over the, I don't know, was it half acre, uh, wetland area? So is that something that has to be approved somehow or agreed to, or how does that work?
Mr. Longhurst, could you talk about the, the, the wetland and the, uh, the timing of identifying, identifying how to deal with the wetland in terms of the review and approval process for this application?
Yeah, maybe we can tag team this one together here, but, um, it sounds like they've had a site meeting with Eagle, um, which is good. Um, they would need to provide some documentation to us to review with Eagle's opinion of what those wetlands are. But regardless, let's assume it's a regulated wetland. Um, it would have to be delineated. They'd meet with Eagle. It'd be shown on the plans. And then they would have to propose a course of action. If they were gonna fill that, there's certain thresholds that may require mitigation or others that may not. Um, Eagle would have to, you know, permit whatever that filling is gonna be. And then if mitigation's required, is that gonna be onsite or offsite? Um, and then tag teaming all of that, then it has to fall within the township's wetland ordinance as well.
Right.
And adhere to those standards, uh, for that. So, um, not saying that it's something that can't be overcome. There's just many more steps that need to be laid out and identified.
And it's very possible that whatever those mitigation numbers, measures may be, may affect the design of the building, so i.e. where the parking lot is or where the building can be. And so if... Without, if is, there was an instance when a site plan was not linked to a rezoning, usually the analysis of this step wouldn't come until much later in the development process. But because at this point in time, the, they're linked, you have to look at it too at this point and have that as a factor in your decision.
Other questions? Um, are the conference rooms fundamental to the construction of the hotel, that is? Could you, could you, like, remove the conference rooms, shrink the size of the hotel and meet all of the...
Anything possible. This hotel prototype is designed by each brand. We comply with their brand. When we do the new construction, we go back and tell like a height. They have that facade was, kinda, any height place you go, see they're four-story or six-story. Now they wanted to, we want three-story this. They wanted to agree with us and design the best way, and their engineering, architect department is helping us to do all that. So it is not the end of the day, uh, end of the world that we have to have conference room that big. We can shrink down to whatever the requirements may be. That can...
Cause I, I wondered if there was like a economic calculation you guys use, cause if you remove a conference room, you lose the rooms above it. So it might not make it economically...
No, you, you're right. You know, I've been doing it for thirty-five years. I have Fairfield Inn Street by Marriott. We have a home, too. We have courtyard. This is the first height place that we are building, and the conference rooms in the hotel are not used. And so... The corporate, they design this prototype, meaning if you don't have a conference room, maybe two thousand square feet, then you may lose ten percent, twenty percent of your corporate business. So that's why they design within that.
Thank you. Piggyback, so the three, the three thousand square foot conference room, is this, is this the first time that it's been brought up? That it's, that the parking calculations are confusing? Has this been ongoing?
Kevin, uh, if you're listening, can you answer that?
Well, as part of the discussion from the last time was, was trying to determine who was gonna use it, uh, whether it was public. There was a discussion with the breakfast bar previously about that being open to the public. It was discussed that that was only for hotel guests. Uh, the conversation came back to the hotel rooms and the meeting rooms. Um, it was determined by the, by the hotel user that, you know, that was, that was, that was intended for hotel guests. And, and taking that approach to the calking, the parking calculations, which pretty much came down to number of rooms, number of employees, and if everything else is limited to the number of guests, it'd be tied back to the, to the, uh, the number of, of hotel rooms that you have. And that was what the determination and the change to, to what the intended use of this particular facility was for, was hotel, it's hotel rooms, the guests, the staff running it. That was, that was, that's the, that's the intent of this particular site plan.
But I think what you've heard from the planning commission and the consultant is, is there's confusion about that. Megan?
Mr. Chair, also, um, in this particular location, there's really not a lot of room for error in terms of parking. Um, you've heard from, actually, the case we had earlier tonight was adjacent or nearby this, and with the popularity of those restaurants, and especially Art and Jake's, there are, most of the parking in the area is already being taken up, and there's not on-street parking that would compensate.
Right. Right, this is a, this is a undeveloped patch of property right now. Versus, uh, trying to retrofit an improvement to a, to a challenge.
I think the last thing we want is a bunch of signs up saying this is property for this business, or this is parking for this business, this is parking for this business, and do not cross. And we want adequate parking for, and flow on that spot for all, all businesses there.
Well, I guess my, my, my comment to that was is if you've already got a Culvers, that you've already granted a parking variance of, 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 of less than nineteen, the existing ordinance, and you've got this other businesses doing well, um, I'm not sure how it's in our realm to provide additional parking for those businesses if it's a separate parcel. Um, we can, we can jointly come up to with it, with a parking agreement and share parking for ebbs and flows of parking, depending on time of day, and that's, that's between the property owners. But that's, that's, that's been a requirement that hasn't really been addressed or, or asked for at this point.
I don't think anybody's going for...
Well, and...
Supplement parking. I think the point is that we wanna make sure that you have enough...
One of time.
You have enough parking to handle your load. That's the concern here, and we're not talking about previous approvals.
And just to...
Hold on, hold on. Wait, what? Stop.
Yep.
Kevin, you, you start. This Kevin.
Give me a second.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm through with my statement.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right, I'm assuming you, and that's, you know, and, and that's why we're trying to nail this down to who's gonna use the hotel, what its intended use is for, and, and why are they building this project, right? I mean, they're building this project cause there's a need for hotel rooms in the area, right? That, that they've done their due diligence, they've done their background information, they've done their, their investigation. It says, hey, this is, there's, there's hotel rooms that need to be provided in this particular area with, with, you know, some of the adjacent restaurants, concert venues, there's a need for it. What's the intended use? You know, it's, it's primarily, it's, it's to accommodate those guests. It's the guests that, that are onsite. They're not promoting this for a secondary restaurant. They're not promoting it for a meeting room space. Um, it's, it's for the, for the guests. And that's what the car, the parking calculations, you know, were, were revised to reflect. And if there's any additional parking deficiencies in the area, I believe that, you know, it's, it's, you know, I believe it's in their, in the property owner's interest to, to come up with some sort of, of, of sharing policy, because I can understand that, you know, some of these adjacent restaurants are gonna have peaks and flows depending on the time of the week, depending on the day of the week. Um, that's gonna differ from the hotel use. There's, you know, the, the hotel use is more of an overnight, uh, type of parking situation where it's gonna be subject to, you know, nine, nine PM to seven AM versus some of these restaurants that are gonna have different peak times. So to, to go through and globally say that there's not enough parking in, in one particular area on these, on these adjacent parcels would be limiting the fact on when are they used, what time are they used, who's, who's the use, and what days of the week. I think there's some, there's some sharing that could occur between the parcel owners, and that, maybe that's something that needs to get figured out. But I, it, to, to say that there's deficient parking on a, on an adjacent property and to hold that against this particular site that should be a standoff, it, it, I, I feel is unfair.
So we're, we're not, we're not considering site plans for any other parcel right now except this one. There's no instrument available to you or to the township that's gonna force any of the neighboring property owners to share parking with you. Your parking challenge is yours alone. There, there's, I guarantee you that Culvers is not gonna share one parking space with you. They're not obligated to, and they're not going to. Your parking challenge is your parking challenge. And we're telling you in a report, and I, I believe a consensus of the planning commission that besides the, the standard of rezoning that's, that's challenging for you, we're not convinced that parking for your site and your site alone is gonna work. You're gonna have to prove it. It doesn't matter what Dick Carlisle said or didn't say to you, or what other, other businesses have, have available in terms of empty parking spaces. This is your challenge. You haven't stepped up to the plate and delivered the information we need. Am I wrong?
I'm not gonna say that you're...
Go ahead.
I'm not gonna say that you're wrong. The, the, the issue at hand is we wanna rezone the property to build the building.
Well, and another issue at hand is you don't meet one of the standards. That's a, that's a big matzo ball. Any questions or comments? Thank you. Uh, with that, I'm gonna put everything on pause for a second, and I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Is there anyone, could you sit down, sir, please, and go open the public hearing? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this matter? Please step forward. Looking at you, triple one ninety-nine. Anyone online?
Yes. Um, my name is Andrew Mahavlich. I'm an attorney. I represent the Comfort Inn and Suites. I have a couple of comments, um, on behalf of my client. The, I, I understand, I, I didn't attend the hearings, but I understand that the, uh, there was no request for variance, that, uh, the height restrictions, uh, with respect to, uh, the Comfort Inn and Suites Hotel when it was being built was strictly enforced. Uh, there was some, uh, consideration for a small parapet. I think it was three feet, uh, was for architectural reasons. Uh, but otherwise, there wasn't a request for variance. It, this, there was strict compliance. Um, the other item, and, and I attended the, by, by, online, uh, the prior hearing with respect to this matter, and, uh, one of the issues we raised, and I think one of the, uh, uh, commission members, um, also noted, was that, uh, no traffic study has been provided. Um, there's a significant issue with traffic with respect to this site. Uh, the only way in and out of the development that, that serves all these establishments, uh, is the traffic light at Fleming, at the Fleming Road intersection. Uh, Art and Jake's is packed nightly, which adds abundance of more traffic. Um, and there's been no study to address that. Uh, I'd also indicate that, uh, there was a significant discussion last time about the Aaron golf balls. There, as I understand, the resubmission, uh, simply said that they're still looking into screening or something else, when I understood that screening at the last hearing, um, was not something that was favored based on its aesthetic qualities. Um, there's also an issue with the Pine Knob property surrounding neighboring, um, and how a three-story hotel facing them. I understood that, uh, when the Comfort Inn and Suites had their presentation, there was a significant, um... Issues, uh, that were addressed at that time, and it doesn't face it head-on, um, like this, this property is intending to. And again, I, I don't think that the resubmission, um, even bothers to address any of those. Um, I have no other comments.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who wishes to comment on this? This is a public hearing. Hearing no one?
Gavel.
Any chance I have to use the gavel, I use it. Close the public hearing? Seven twenty, seven twenty... Comments, questions?
I'll, I'll just comment real quick. That it's apparent to me, um, that the standards haven't been met for the rezoning, um, and, or, and there's still plenty of open questions on wetlands and a disagreement on parking. Uh, I don't know how this can move forward.
So I think my comments are just basically the same I have last time, because I don't really see much changed here, so, um, I will answer, Commissioner Gally, I think, wanted to get a straw poll on some of these things, maybe we can, we can agree on. I, I, from a aesthetic standpoint, from a use standpoint, I actually don't have a problem, um, with, with the building, the use. Um, I'm just going to be consistent, like I was last time. It just doesn't fit, and it just doesn't. There, no, not only do you have the deficiencies, um, you know, your open space, most, it's only fifteen percent open space, and it's really all in the northeast corner of the site, which is already existing. I mean, it really, you look at it, this is just parking in a building. Um, you've got sixty-seven percent lock coverage percentage, I think, is what I read. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but, I mean, it just, it just doesn't fit. If you had more land, you can do more landscaping, meet the parking requirements. I'd be amenable probably to a lot of what you're asking here, but I, I don't see it. I think to the, you know, to the reasons the rest of the commissions are, commissioners are mentioning, I don't see a path forward. Um, you know, the wetlands doesn't, doesn't, I do this, you know, daily with my, with my, my own job. I'm not worried about the wetlands. I think you could get through that. Uh, but you just have much bigger issues, um, and it's even bigger than parking. It just doesn't fit on there, so. Those are my comments. Um, I wouldn't be willing to move forward with this, the, the way I'm seeing it. I don't know what you can do to make it, make it work. I'd love to see this, maybe somewhere else, you know, just that the location is great, the site doesn't work, so. Those are my comments.
You look like you want to say something.
Not right now.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Gally. I think it's, I think it's a fine-looking building, but the orientation doesn't work. The, the, uh, it, it, it's, it just seems like it's, it doesn't look like it's sixteen and a half percent open space. It looks like significantly less, but again, because of the location of where most of the open space is, it just looks like there's a lot jammed onto that site, and given the fact that, that the parking is still up in the air, and, and, you know, the, the rezoning standard not being mad, and seeking, out of the gate seeking a variance, and I just don't think this is ready for us to consider. There's, there's some work to be done here. I think it just, as is, it doesn't fit. Too many unanswered questions. Mr. Gally?
Well, I'll, obviously, I spoke before that, you know, obviously, I like the renditions of the building and the, and the use for that area. I mean, just looking at the room count, there's a hundred and one rooms. Can you, can you make the building fit if you shave ten rooms, shave one of the meeting rooms, add some green space, add a little bit more parking? You know, I don't, I don't know if that fits our profitability model, and those numbers make it work, but, you know, obviously, we need Eagle. Obviously, we're really tight with the density in the, the building and the, and the parking, so I guess, until those things become clearer or more acceptable, yeah, I think it needs to be postponed.
Postponed to grant the, the applicant an opportunity to address the comments in the report and by planning commission. Something like that, right? If there were a resolution?
Yeah, I looked it up on Google Earth, and it is really a small spot for everything that's trying to go there. And just another concern that I have is it doesn't, to me, it doesn't appear like it's setting the hotel off just because of the location that it's in. You know, it, it seems like it detracts from the whole look of the hotel.
I would just simply ag- agree with all the comments I've heard so far. Um, it is, it's just a tough site to fit something that large in, and, you know, I'd, if I was going to give some guidance, I would, to, I would look at them to, I would look for, in their redesign, a focus on greater open space, uh, reduce the size of the building, and look again at traffic flow patterns, uh, even with the parking and the tough, tough entrance there. Um, they, they just have some, a really tough site, and, um, I, I just don't see how it fits, but I will leave it up to them to convince me.
And, and
There's options to be done there. There, it just, it's really, I think what it is, is they're just trying to put too large of a building and too small of a lot.
And I think most of your issues that you just stated were listed in the report, Colonel Wartman Associates.
Absolutely. They did a great job. I applaud your report.
So with that being said, I'm, I'm making a motion, P C file number two thousand twenty-three dash zero zero three, request for planned rezoning overlay from C one local commercial to O S two office service two be postponed to provide the petitioner an opportunity to redesign the site and address the issues identified in the report prepared by Kyle Wartman Associates, report prepared by Noah K. Fraus, and comments provided by the planning commission.
I'll support the motion.
Any discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bushrow?
Yes.
Mr. Gally?
Yes.
Mr. Lachrin?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Richie Absinthe, Chairman Savadon?
Yes.
Ms. Tully, yes.
Item is postponed with direction. Next item is item G under regular business, G one, P C file number two thousand twenty-three dash zero zero five. Zoning ordinance text amendment discussion regarding section five point one-one related to maintenance of farm animals. Who has the honors?
All right.
All right.
So, um, I understand that you had, had a request for, uh, keeping of chickens ordinance, and you've looked at that at your previous meeting, um, and that would be a general code ordinance that would be adopted by the township board. However, if, as that goes forward, there would be some amendments that would be needed, um, to, um, so that keeping of chickens is in your packet, um, but then also there would be, need to be amendments to, um, section five eleven, um, of the zoning ordinance, um, in order to have that dovetail and not, um, conflict. Um, so essentially, what this does is it allows four hens on a parcel not less than one acre in R one A, one B, one C, and R, R one R. Um, and it's where, it's a single-family dwelling unit. The chickens are kept as family pets or to lay eggs for personal consumption only, so people are not selling them, um, which is key because once there's the intent to sell or selling right to farm kicks in. Um, no roosters or male chickens, uh, because they make noise. Sorry, gentlemen. Um, and then, um,
You said no roosters or male chickens?
Yes, just to be sure. Um, and then, um, where applicable, uh, annual approval from Home and Order Association or similar, and then animal, annual permit. And the reason for the an- annual permit is that, um, sometimes you have bad actors, um, and so then those wouldn't be renewed. There's a lot of things in here about, um, licensing, um, the enclosures, performance standards. I'm happy to answer any questions about those. Um, but these are all based on, um, best standards from M S U extension, um, in terms of keeping of chickens. Um, and then for revisions in zoning ordinance, it's section two oh two, so that a class three animal, it says, animals considered poultry except for chickens, um, is added, so you're not conflicting. And then, um, section five eleven has a paragraph that specifies that the regulations apply to all properties where animals are being kept except for bona fide farm operations, which protect and your right to farm in keeping of chickens regulated by chapter eight, article four, keeping of chickens. And then that following section is enclosed, just all of, of that, that follows in zoning ordinance for context.
Excellent. Nice job.
Yeah, I don't think I have any questions. To a very persistent resident, this has been on our radar for six months or so. I don't know how long.
Not mentioning any names, but does the persistent resident have any comments? It's not a public hearing, but if you, you sure?
But it's been longer than six months.
Can I ask a, a question as the, as the new guy and wasn't, uh, wasn't part of the original, and I'm not fully into it. Where did the one acre set come from, or is it, is it, is that flexible? Because one acre actually seems a little large for a small chicken coop. So, I would actually, if I was, if I was proposing and writing this, or had been part of the planning commission, I probably would have reduced that slightly. Just wanted to throw that out there. I'll just get some history there.
Well, currently, it's three acres.
Yes, I'm aware of that.
Um, so I, I think in discussions at the planning commission level, and even from some opinion of zoning board appeals, it was considered that one acre might be reasonable and also not keep out the, the thought of a subdivision having a lot of backyard chicken coops, which is, can become a very big problem for smell and odor and noise and everything else. So, there's a, there's a law of unintended consequences when you allow them on a, you know, fifteen thousand square foot lot.
I, I, I agree that there's a minimum that should definitely be allowed.
Or even a half acre, definitely. So.
Yeah, I guess maybe a simpler answer might have been, it just was kind of the consensus. Everybody settled on after months and months of discussion. I believe Mr. Carlisle, or maybe you did the work behind the scenes of neighboring communities that had similar ordinances, and, and there is communities that have free-for-all, and there's ones that are more strict. So, I think we kind of tried to hit a sweet spot, more or less.
I applaud the effort. I'm, I was just curious where that came from, and I'm late, like I said, I'm late to the game, so I'm not going to try to disrupt anything.
And a lot of times when it's on much smaller lots than one acre, what the municipality will do is limit the number of permits. Um, so there's only a certain amount of permits that are allowed in the municipality, um, so that you don't have that concentration of, um, of, of keeping of chickens. Um, so I know that this was a long debate in terms of size, um, and just, we provide a variety of different regulations.
Mr. Bushrow, I'll provide you the, I'll email you the white paper that
Okay, perfect.
the office did, so.
I appreciate that.
I think a lot of the smaller parcels are in subdivisions that prohibit accessory structures and such anyways, so it, you know, there's a, at least a lot of the newer subs that have an active association.
I think Brian, Meg, and Dick did a really good job of trying to strike a balance between being permissive but not giving away the farm. Oh, there's a pun for you right there. So, um, but I think it's time, my, I think it's time to move this on to the township board and let them
Need a set of public hearing.
In the, so with that being said, could you, do we need a motion to set a public hearing? I move that, uh, the planning, the, the, uh, planning commission, direct planning staff to set a public hearing for this item at the next available meeting. Available, that meets notification requirements.
I'll second.
Discussion?
I think this is a really well-done document.
I agree. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bushrow?
Yes.
Mr. Gally?
Yes.
Mr. Lachrin?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Richie Absinthe, Chairman Savadon?
Yes.
Ms. Tully, yes.
One more planning commission meeting. Next item is item H, approval of minutes for the regular meeting minutes of June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Any comments?
I move for approval of the planning commission meetings of June fifteenth, ninth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second. Any discussion?
I'll be abstaining.
Okay. Um, all in favor, uh, of the motion, seconded motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Nays?
I'll be abstaining as well.
Abstentions?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Bushrow, Mr. Lachrin abstained. Four yeses. Item passes. Next item is, uh, consultant reports master, master plan update.
We've been working on the master plan and, um, are in the phase of editing everything, bringing up to date in terms of what's been discussed. Um, what I distributed to you are the current goals and objectives with some edits from Mr. Carlisle, and also some short notes to you all. Um, you'll notice usually at the end of each subject area, there'll, you'll see note for P C or question for P C. Um, and so what we're asking you to do is between now and your next meeting, um, to look those over and, um, give us input back. Um, and then also wanted to let you know that, um, we are looking to have a joint meeting of the D D A and the C I A. Um, I believe we were going to have that in middle of August. Yes. Um, and so, meet with those bodies in order to update the Sashaba Road and Dixie Highway areas. Um, and then we could bring those, tho- the results of that and some suggested edits to you back in September.
Any questions?
I just have one comment. The newly formed open space committee, have they been included in this conversation?
Uh, I believe that they came out of the public input session that we had, but of course, once we have a full draft, we can, if you would like, we can circle back to them.
That'd be great.
So are you looking for comments now on this, or?
No, not, not right now. Um,
Homework.
Yeah, it's your homework.
There'll be a quiz next meeting.
Didn't need more of that.
Okay.
This will be put on the master plan website, too. I'd like to do that.
Yeah, I'll get you an electronic version tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, those watching at home, go to the, go to the master plan website. You can download your own copy of this. No other questions or comments? Next item is item J, uh, planning commission bylaws. The bylaws were, were added to the agenda at my request. Thanks, Brian, for putting these on. Some of the newer members may, may, have never have seen this, so I thought it was important to, to get these in front of everyone. These are the rules that we have to conduct business by. They were last updated May twenty-third, twenty thirteen, so it's been about ten years.
Sixteen.
What's that?
It was sixteen, I believe, or eighteen. That's wrong. The, the footnote's wrong, but
Okay.
I grabbed the latest edition.
Okay.
The only difference in, in, in that was changing of the order of the agenda, so.
Okay.
But the original text of thirteen, which was the official revision, is essentially still there.
Okay. But I want to, I want to bring everyone's attention to item section four, agenda, four A. The agenda for each commission meeting shall be prepared by the building and planning department at the direction of the chair. The agenda for each commission meeting shall be prepared by the building and planning department at the direction of the chair. So if there's new items that are moved forward by a resident, staff, consultant, township board, what have you.
Excuse me, Mike, are you reading, so agenda four A?
Yes.
It says, um, the notes I have on my package to say, the meeting shall be prepared by the building and planning department in consultation with the chairman. That's, I'm just noting, noting a difference in the direction and consultation maybe.
Which is the relevant document?
He's got it.
Okay. In calls, in consultation with the chair, fine.
No opinion on it, I was just correcting.
That's fine.
I was just correcting.
I saw, I was looking at a document from twenty thirteen. In consultation with the chair. That's what it says. So, again, moving forward, any new items that are being proposed shall be shall be in consultation with the chair. This, this would not apply to development applications, in my opinion. They've got a, they've got a fuse that, you know, we're, we're kind of at the mercy of the, of the applications, but for new items that are for discussion or what have you. Let's remember the rules.
Did that get distributed?
It's in your packet.
I noticed one other section that was curious. "To officers, see if anybody resigns from the Planning Commission, removed. The commission will elect a new member to serve the remainder of the term." And no offense to Mr. Bushrow. But, I mean, I never knew that, obviously. But on a forward-going basis, if that's our governing document, I mean, that's what it should be.
But that's in, that conflicts with the ordinance, is correct, or?
The ordinance plus the enabling act.
Yeah.
May I offer a clarification?
Yeah.
It's about officers, not members.
Oh, 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 I missed a word.
So officers would be your chair, your vice chair, and your secretary.
Gotcha.
Good catch.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
So then they just reseat the officer, not the actual position?
No.
Gotcha.
As, that is mandated by state law, how that happens.
Those pesky words that just get put in good.
So everyone's got a copy of it now, so we can keep in mind our rules. And I had an old copy, so there, there you go. The one I had on files is five years old.
Unfortunately, the record-keeping of, when I went back and looked at the, you know, versioning of this file is terrible. So I don't even have the original that everyone at the time signed.
When would this have been originally written? Any clue?
I think it was 13, earlier than 13.
Is this the, has there been changes to this one, or is this just a, what's out, what's been out there for years, since 13?
The latest was, I can't hear it right now. 11/10 of 16.
Well, it's, what's funny about that, I mentioned the chair, that, God, it hasn't come up since I've been on it, and it's been over 10 years. And you had the one meeting on there, and it had Krull on there, and it, it said I was absent. And I'm like, ah, that must've been the only meeting I missed in 12 years. I don't remember it.
I was on 16. I don't remember covering it either, so.
Well, I, so I, I got my copy, and it's like, was I on in 13? I couldn't, you know?
So I probably sent you a wrong, you know, an incorrect one separately.
Wasn't you, it was someone else.
But, but what's the usefulness of this document? None of us have ever really seen it.
It's how we're supposed to run our meetings and-
But maybe someone should, you know, mention it to new members or-
Well, we did. We just did.
I think the last change we made was, we made some adjustment about going overtime and ending at 10 in 2016. I think that was the last time we looked at it.
Yeah, we used to have unfinished, we used to have an agenda order that was really messy. So like, we'd have a public hearing, and then it would be down in, in like, new business or something like that. It was duplicated throughout the agenda when we just simplified it and said, here's the public hearing. You know, and it's just, everything's regular business. There's no, ZBA has unfinished business, new business. This, we just tried to simplify it and keep it more consistent with the Township Board and how they run their meetings.
Is there anything that you want to address specifically that needs to be addressed, or are you just bringing it to our attention?
Just bring it, bring it to everyone's attention so we're all on the same page. And also just meeting, meeting management and trying to help, trying, trying to provide assistance to Brian setting up agendas. I don't want them to get too packed or too controversial or too unmanageable. So again, consultation of the chair. I'm happy to help. Brian's got my cell phone number, and when Brian calls me or texts me, I, I pick up.
I would say with not having the bylaws for 10 years, as a group, we've done a pretty efficient job.
I would agree.
We figured it out.
I think, I think, I, I've said it before publicly, I'll say it again, I think this is an excellent Planning Commission. I think we're reasonable and fair. I think we do a really nice job. I enjoy coming here, or I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it.
Patch your back.
We, we have excellent staff, too.
Yeah, absolutely, and consultants. And Boy Scout troops. All right. I'm, I motion, we adjourn. Do we have a second? Second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there is no one, adjourn.